Good evening. If you desire to address the City Council during this meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, please silence your cellphones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. Call to order the special meeting of the City of Grand Terrace for June 19th, 2018. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Begin.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Royalbliss.
Present.
Mayor McInnes.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start with public comment. Opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on the agenda only. And is there any -- are there any requests to speak at this time? No. Okay. So we'll move on to unfinished business, which is to continue deliberations of the two-year budget for fiscal years 2018, 19, and 2019, 20. May we please have our staff report?
Good evening, Mayor McInnes and Councilmembers. For the record, Gee-Herald Duffy, City Manager. And so, as the mayor indicated, this is the continuation of the proposed budget for our fiscal year 2018, 19, and 1920. As we had indicated at the previous meeting, this is a two-year budget, and -- but it does allow for the council to come back next year to do refreshment, to ensure that all of our assumptions were correct in the first part of the year. So. Let me grab the right. So, the city built the budget on the -- staff built the budget based on the 2030 vision, and in detail, you know, we have our 2030 vision where it says ensure our fiscal solvency, maintain public safety, promote economic development, and develop and implement successful partnerships, and engage in proactive communication. But one of the things that's very important that we don't really go into is the real definition of what those actually really, really mean. And so, in terms of ensure our fiscal viability, we have commit to a balanced budget, identify additional revenue sources, review expenditures and seek savings, explore creative means to provide services, and ensure appropriate cost recovery for services. And then we talk about maintain public safety. We talk about ensure staff levels for police services to remain adequate for our community, and invest in critical infrastructure improvements to our infrastructure, and promote economic development. We talk about develop proactive economic development plans to attract new businesses, invest in infrastructure needed to support business attraction and retention, prepare for development by updating zoning and development codes, including the sign code. And number four is develop and implement successful partnerships. We work collaboratively with community groups, provide private and public sector agencies to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting youth, seniors, and our community. Work with local, regional, and state agencies to ensure funding for programs and projects. And five, engage in proactive communications and develop and implement a cost-effective proactive communication program. Utilize technologies and web-based tools to disseminate information and engage in the community by jurisdictions. So in doing so, that provides the definition that we sort of built the budget around and that we presented to the council today. The City Manager's responsibility is to provide the council with the proposed budget. So that proposed budget was delivered to the council last week, and one of the things that we want to make sure that happens is -- let me just move through this. Of course, tonight, so we have an overview of the proposed budget as presented by the City Manager, highlights of proposed budgets by departments, and then proposed budgets represents City Manager's plan to achieve council's goals and objectives as identified in the city's 2030 vision. So here's staff's recommendation for tonight. Staff recommends that the council identify modifications to the proposed budgets during department presentations by motioning for items to be removed, seeking a second, and have the entire council pull items out of the proposed budget. Staff will keep a running total of all allocations to the proposed budget, and what will happen is any deletions to the proposed budget will add to the fund balance. As the council remembers, the first part of this two-year budget cycle, there is zero fund balance addition to the existing fund balance that we have. And so any deletions from the budget will add to our annual fund balance. And then any additions to the budget, proposed budget, without any deletions will result in an unbalanced budget. So the overall goal would be, is as each department presents their departmental programs, if the council sees something they want to be removed from the budget, at that point in time, the council should say, indicate, "I'm not in support of that," and then if there's a second, they can pull it out. And then what will happen at that point in time, we'll be able to remove that item as you move forward, and we'll keep a running total, so you have additional funding that will go to the fund balance, or that you can use somewhere else as we go through this process. So. And what we have for the -- what we have for the council tonight is a list of about 50 departmental programs that were identified as our top 10 projects by department. And so each department is prepared to go through those particular items. Some of the items are just routine, or not routine, but they're projects that rely heavily on existing staff. And for example, it could be that our clerk has a program here for records management. The clerk, the council previously did a funding program for a scanning system that it's already been budgeted in previous, and now we have staff to implement that program. And so you'll just see staff resources as the funding allocation for that program, but it's letting you know these are the primary duties for the City Clerk at the time. And so with that, I'm available for any questions before we start the presentation.
Any questions at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
Mr. Duffy, you had the budget in the parks. Do you have the citizens' recommendation or what they scored? I know you gave them a scoring sheet. Do we have the results for that?
We don't have the results for that at this time, sir. We're still putting those results together. And what it was, it was really their ranking of the priorities, so you're absolutely right about that. We can -- we'll bring that back to the council on the -- at our next meeting.
Well, I mean, they came out there on purpose that night to do this, and this is an important meeting.
Absolutely.
I mean, I'd like to see the results and let their voice be heard and their ranking.
Yes, I think we have that. I know it's being tabulated. Can you just, one of you guys just check what he did the tabulation, so can you just run and check with Jesse? So we'll get that before the night's over, sir. So this is the list of the various projects and the information that I just briefly went I did want to add, just kind of to briefly go back. And as I mentioned earlier to the council in the previous meeting, so what we have here is in our 16, 17, 18, 19, and 1920, we are at the sustainable level, but without any significant revenue enhancements or increases, we're basically in sustainability. And if we run across any significant issue, we suffer the potential of being vulnerable. And so we're, at this point in time, waiting for the initial increase in development to occur, so we can move up to healthy or just be able to maintain our sustainability within So we'll start off with the City Clerk with the department presentations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. Debra Thomas with the City Clerk's office.
Good evening. Okay. Push a little harder.
Yeah, just keep going to the City Clerk.
Okay. No, it's just.
Yeah, we're having some problems with it.
City Clerk's office has taken over Brownfield remediation.
Can you manually just do that, Sandra?
Would you mind? Well, currently, one of the first project that I wanted to talk to you about is just the status of our Laserfish program. The Laserfish Electronic Document Management System was purchased in 2017, 2018 fiscal year in the amount of $28,500, so we have no more funding for that because it's fully paid. And it is currently installed and ready to go. I've been working with CPS, and we're ready to start importing scanning, and we are live. The only thing that we are working on, which is probably within the next two weeks, is to open up our web portal to the public. I'd like to focus, well, we'd like to focus on the most records that are asked for in public records requests, such as building permits, minutes, resolutions, and ordinance, and we'll focus on those first, and then we'll address the departments individually to add additional records that'll be easily accessible to the public. Next, we have a technology program, changes in 1718 to 1819. The upgrades to the Agenda Processing System was eliminated in this budget year, but to accommodate the needs and requests of City Council members to access documents, PowerPoints, emails, and applications at the dais and on the go, this will help eliminate printed papers. We'd like to implement tablet use for each of the council members this year. We have our 2018 general municipal election. That is held every other year, therefore last year we did not have a budget for that, but every other year in the even number of years, we need to include that in our budget. So we have funding of $10,000 for the three seats that are open, as well as the measure that's being placed. The City Clerk is responsible for administering the local procedures through which representatives are selective, and will assist all the candidates in meeting their legal responsibilities before, during, and after the election. Public records requests. We have seen an increase of 45% in 2016, 17, and an additional 50% increase in 2017 and 18, and of course, we do anticipate an increase in 2018, 19. The office specialist will, excuse me, support the City Clerk's office to ensure those timely responses continue, and we work effortlessly to make sure that they receive their responses within 10 days, preferably before the 10 days. Recognitions and proclamations. Policy before, we typically did not release, do press releases, but this year we're going to implement that, and we will, upon receipt or issuance of a city recognition or a proclamation, whether we issue or we receive, we will send those to local area newspapers to publish. It's my understanding that a lot of them will work with us and publish that free of charge for us if they have room in the paper. And we'll also post that information on our website, and there's a news section on the front page that members of the public can click to read that information. The telephone system improvements. The staff's office specialist has taken over all of the calls so that they do not go through the phone tree, so they can speak to a live person, and she ensures that those calls are directed to the appropriate department. If they're not available at the time, she will take messages, preferably, and forward those, so that they don't have to leave a message in the voicemail unless they request it. Also, if any changes have been made, she is going to ensure that those changes in that phone tree are, that they're updated timely. The Historical and Cultural Committee staff support. The City Clerk provides that support to the committee and communicates their needs to the City Manager and additional staff as appropriate. City Council Chamber reception upgrade. This is a new project that we wanted to look at this year to create an inviting space for City Council receptions and celebrations in the foyer to the council chamber. Decor would include some furniture and the display of all resolutions and proclamations that have been bestowed upon the city, as well as including any photographs and artwork. And that's all the City Clerk has. Do you have any questions?
I'm curious how we have a tablet technology program and improvements in the foyer or the reception area that don't cost anything.
Right. And what you see there, Mayor, is that these are projects we'd like to come back to the council with, but there's no funding for those programs at this time.
Okay. Are there any other questions of staff?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Sandra Molina. I'm the Planning and Development Services Director for the city. I'll go ahead and present my department's proposed budget, or our top 10 projects, I should say. So this coming fiscal year, we will continue to implement the grant that we were awarded under the Act of Transportation Program. We have a consultant onboard that is preparing this plan. The council may have seen our consultant at the Community Day event the first weekend of June. So this is, funding is implemented. We are fully funded, so no new funding sources being requested. We anticipate that the plan will come to the council in September. A new project as well is the Planning Commission Training on the Gateway Specific Plan and Environmental Impact Report. Funding sources is staff resources. The Gateway Specific Plan and Environmental Impact Report, it's a pretty significant, substantial project. The city doesn't see specific plans of this size or environmental impact reports very often, and so what we intend to start doing in August is start training the Planning Commission with regard to the specific plan content and the process, going to Planning Commission and then City Council. We also want to train them on the Environmental Impact Report SECA process. Again, that's a document that will go to the Planning Commission and ultimately to the council. And then also, this project will have specific planning entitlements for Phase One, which is the multi-family component. There will be a site, an architectural review, a track map, a sign program. In conjunction with the specific plan, you'll have a general plan amendment and zoning amendments, and then a development agreement. So this is quite a few applications, and we just want to get the commission onboard with regard to the process and their role in this process. Also, throughout the fiscal years, we will process various entitlements. We anticipate that in the coming years that we will have a new residential project on Michigan and Pico, approximately 35 lots. The Housing Authority property that was sold to Aegis Development, excuse me, Aegis Builders, Inc., that did close just last Friday, and so that's about 11 lots. And then also, the Van Buren project that was approved, the building permits for those should be issued this next fiscal year. We also anticipate that the Cargill map on Pico Street will also be pulling permits, and so developer fees would pay for the cost of staff services for those projects. One of our projects for this upcoming fiscal year is to resolve the National Logistics Use. That's a pallet business yard off of Main Street. That applicant established on the property without entitlements. Through code enforcement action, we entered into a settlement agreement with the applicant, and we anticipate processing and resolving that project in the coming year. The cost for that is paid by the developer as well. This is a project, the 40-acre Green Zone, that's in the area north of Vivienda. There's no funding for this particular project, but what we had anticipated with the Agricultural Two Overlay District is that we would start looking at applications or grants, I should say, to further master plan the area with regard to greening projects. But I will say that our Round Two Urban Greening Grant is still being reviewed by the National, excuse me, Natural Resource Agency, so if we do receive funding for that project, that would at least begin the implementation of the green zone concept. With regard to grants administration, for the upcoming fiscal year, we did have to reduce our funding request for that. We are proposing a $10,000 budget for the upcoming fiscal years. We do have two projects that are funded. We have the Blue Mountain Trailhead, which we just recently learned was funded, so we would work on the implementation of that project. The MSRC grant, which was allocation the city received, that's for electrical vehicle charging stations. We anticipate going out to bid within the next month to put some state vehicle, excuse me, electric charging stations here at City Hall, and then we're also working with a commercial property owner to do that. But we are also applying for two new ATP Cycle Four grant applications. And if the council visited the consultants booth at Community Day, they were displaying some priority projects, and one of those projects is to do the multi-use pedestrian bike trail along Canal, the Gage Canal, and so that's one application that we're going to submit for grant funding. And the other one is the protected bike paths along Barton Road and Mount Vernon, and also around Mount Vernon, you may have seen on the concepts, trying to give some more protection to the side residential streets. And so we will be applying for those two applications under ATP, and those will be submitted at the end of July. Special Events Committee, this is a project we've been implementing. The funding is just existing staff resources, but we have a committee made up at the City Manager's Office, the Planning Department, Building and Safety, Public Works, County Fire, and County Sheriffs. And so what we do with projects that come in for special events, even if they're annual events such as Community Day, or even the Tree Lighting Event, even though we've had those for successive years, we found it's more beneficial to meet with this committee and with the applicants, and to do a more comprehensive review, make sure we address all potential issues. So building and safety inspections and plan checking, our funding for this is budgeted at about $90,000. It's offset by general fund and developer fees. In the coming year, with those projects that staff identified a few slides earlier, we anticipate about 80 new residential permits in 1819. But for year-to-date, 138 permits have been issued, and we've conducted 450 inspections. And I will add that our Plan Checking and Inspection Services and our Building Official Services are currently being filled by consultants, but the plan checking is offset by developers paying for that cost. So probably one of our more significant changes coming up for the two, excuse me, for the upcoming fiscal year, and the second fiscal year that we're looking at, is animal control and code enforcement. So the big change is we are bringing animal control field services into our existing staffing, or I should say, within the Code Enforcement Department. And so animal control and code enforcement, some of our standard programs that we have every year is rental inspection program. And there are currently about 360 properties in this program, and some of those are multi-family projects such as the Heights and the Highlands Apartments. Year-to-date, the staff has issued 323 notices of correction, and when we do those follow-up inspections, sometimes some of these cases will fall into notices of violations and then citations. We also do special code projects. For the last two years, we've been doing spring cleaning, dressing, and operative vehicles. Next year, we may do something different with regard to, what we've been seeing a lot of is overgrown vegetation, and those are also quality of life issues, and we may do something different the upcoming year. With regard to animal control aspect of the department, so with this program, we're going to have seven days a week, code enforcement slash animal control officer on duty, but we also have to make sure that we're handling and staffing emergency on-call services, and this is our after-hours from when we close shop in the, at the end of the day to when we open up the next day. So we have to make sure we have that properly staffed with trained animal control code enforcement officers. One of the things the council asked us to look at with this program is also canvassing, and so we'll implement a program of canvassing where we do visit the residential properties to ensure that dogs are licensed. We will do that at least once a year. Also, with the dog park, what our vendor is currently doing is visiting the dog park on an ongoing basis, just to ensure that the dogs there are licensed, and just keeping an eye on things. And so we would continue to do that when we bring this service in-house. One of the things that has happened at the dog park, we have had one bite attack that was, that we did have a report on provided by the vendor, and then also there was some discussion about an attack also at the dog park that didn't generate a report. But our animal control code enforcement staff will also handle nuisance complaints and calls, so barking dog complaints, loose dog complaints, dead animal pickup, all of those things are activities and responsibilities that will come in-house. So these services that we're mentioning with regard to animal control and code enforcement, in addition to that, is just the standard proactive and reactive code enforcement activities that the department does. And for this particular program here, when you look at our staffing levels for 18, and 19, and 19, and 20, we are proposing in our budget, something that we also talked to the council about about a month or so ago, and that's to fund a second part-time animal control code enforcement officer. Ongoing project that this department also handles is street sweeping. So the street sweeping vendor is, their costs are offset by our solid waste fees that are collected by BRTAC. We're not proposing any changes to this program. Year-to-date, we've had about 1770 citations, and the revenue off of that's approximately $40,000. You know, the street sweeping ticket is $37.50, but $12.50 is a pass-through goes to the state. Of that $25 that's left over, about $2 goes to the vendor that's collecting the fines and the fees, and so our revenue is approximately $40,000 with regard to the citations that have been issued. We also have a Development Advisory Board, and this is a board made up of Planning, Building and Safety, Public Works, Riverside Highland Water Company, County Fire, and Colton Water and Wastewater. And this is an opportunity where if we have a developer that's proposing a project, or maybe someone that wants to purchase a piece of property because they have a project in mind, this is an opportunity for them to not expend a lot of money, give us mind, this is an opportunity for them to not expend a lot of money, give us a very conceptual plan, we don't charge a fee for that, and we meet with them and we go over it, and this just allows them to go to a go or no-go, so to speak. So they either get the information and determine they can move forward with the project, or they decide that they're not going to move forward with it at that particular time. And so year-to-date, we've had about 10 applications on that. And our last slide here is emergency management. We, the council did see our hazard mitigation plan, which is just approved. We found out last week that FEMA did approve it, so we'll be bringing it to council in July for adoption. We're going to be transitioning our volunteer emergency operations committee into a CERT team, and in September, we anticipate having a second CERT training to get some more residents trained in CERT. That's my last slide, so that's my last slide, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Questions for Director Molina?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council.
Good evening.
Cynthia Fortune here, reporting for the Finance Department. Top 10 projects for fiscal years 2018, '19, and 2019, '20. So our first one is the annual audit. As City Council is aware, an annual audit is always conducted by external auditors, and what they review is to make sure that our financial operations do meet generally accepted accounting principles, that our internal controls meet the requirements that are set by the GASB, and any compliance with any county, state, or federal programs that we have requested. So if we applied for any grants, and there are certain grant requirements, they make sure we do adhere to those. Our second project is payroll. This is an ongoing, as City Council is aware, every two weeks we process payroll. This is a bi-weekly expense. We are responsible for maintaining the database to make sure that the data in the ADP database is correct in relation to hourly rate, benefits for each employee, and hours worked. What ADP does is process, issue the checks or direct deposit, reports to the state, the county, or the feds for any payroll or taxing requirements. And ADP charges us about $13.5 a year. It's actually percentage of actual payroll, so that will vary from month to month. And our next project are the budget and quarterly reports that we do provide City Council, and this is to keep you apprised of the fiscal condition the city is in, and any variances that might affect the city's fiscal stability. We do quarterly reports and we do monthly financial reports. The Finance Department also provides a treasurer's report. That being different is this actually informs you of what the actual cash is on hand at a certain point in time. We also provide City Council a monthly cash register, so that City Council is aware of all disbursements made, whether it be through a check, a wire, or an ACH, a bank-to-bank And our last project is contract compliance. So this is when purchase orders are issued to make disbursements. We want to make sure that if it is a contract, that we have the contractual agreement. If it is over a certain amount, there is an approved staff report by council, and it is signed by all the parties involved. That concludes the Finance Department presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Any questions for Assistant City Manager?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'll be providing information for the City Manager's Office. As the Mayor and Council may know, that there are multiple functions in the City Manager's Office. One of those functions is the Human Resources application. We used to have a part-time human resource technician that is no longer, that position is no longer funded, and the City Manager's Office now is basically funded by, I'm sorry, supported by the City Manager's Office, the ACM Executive Assistant, and the .5 is the part-time bus driver that we operate the senior bus program. In the, under the Human Resources side, in order to balance the budget, we were proposing to unfund two positions, the one, the management analyst, which is $80,000, the principal accountant, part-time, reduction of $40,000. Both of those were in the Finance Department. And prior to this year, those positions were actually under contract through the Willdan Contract, and so one of the things that we did was we moved those positions over to the city as a part of, it was actually cheaper through Pepper to have those become internal employees versus through the Willdan Contract. But in, but once we lost revenue from the successor agency administrative overhead, in order to balance the budget, we needed to find ways to make up that loss. And one of the things we did was basically go through and say, we can go without funding these particular, these two positions. The next item was the addition of one part-time animal code enforcement officer. And so one of the things that's very important about the new animal control slash code enforcement section that we have is that we are taking basically a fully funded animal control contract and with 24-hour service, and we're combining that resource with existing resources in code enforcement. And so under the traditional code enforcement, we had one code enforcement officer and one part-time person. And basically, what we're doing is we're adding all those responsibilities onto the code and the part-time person, and then adding another part-time person on to assist with on-call to give us the 24-hour animal control code enforcement services. And so that's the part-time position, and it's about $35,000. One of the requests that I did receive from the council, from a member of the council, was to look at trying to modify the service and delete that particular position. Next, we have the Human Resources, we have the compaction issue, where we have in the City Manager's Office, the ACM position is, the salary range is very close to within a 5% range of the Public Works Director, which she may some, the ACM may sometimes supervise the Public Works Director. So to address the compaction issue, we wanted to add the additional $11,500 range into the salary, in salary range. The actual cost for that would be approximately $8,000, and not the $11,500, because there's no, that included overhead and benefits, which doesn't apply in this particular case. The, so that would add the additional $11,500 to the overall budget. That is actually in the budget now, and so one of the things we wanted to do was put that out there in case the council wanted to address that particular issue. In addition to that, we have the senior center and bus activities. So that overall program for the senior center is $107,500, and it's a combination of grants and some support from the general fund. It's about $21,000. So the senior center utilities and operations is $29,500. And that's paying for the utility bills, the cable, the maintenance, and the upkeep. And then we have the bus program, which is curb-to-curb service from the residence home to the senior center, and then the bus also then goes out and provides various excursions. So we have a grant for $22,000 for the bus services for the bus and the driver, and then we also add an additional $11,000 for the general fund. And then we also added last year the senior center coordinator position through our Community Development Block grant, and also for the meals and coordination for the CBD program. That total was $35,000, then plus an additional $10,000 from the general fund, and all those totals equal $107,500 for the senior center activities and also the bus activities. One of the things the council wanted us to work on was the communication strategy. So in this year's budget, we actually had money for the new website, which that should be able to be launched in July of this year. We're also doing e-blast newsletters, subscriptions, the Facebook page. We've seen a dramatic increase in our Facebook following. We have a YouTube channel now, and we've partnered with Colton Joint Unified School District. We also have Channel Three, which we've made some improvements for over this past year, and we also have some original programming added to Channel Three, and we're doing press releases, and we're also looking for original coverage to communication, through our communication plan when we have a special particular project. Under Economic Development, we continue to promote the sale of the city and successor agency properties. We work with existing property owners to locate new and help existing businesses expand. That is an active, almost roller coaster ride. One week, we have something very exciting. The deal looks like it's going to come through, and then there's some other modification that it's been delayed. So, but we are, we are very, very hopeful that we, our strategy of working with businesses and local realtors and national chains will yield some positive results in the near, near And then we have a new program that was added this year, Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. Some of the things that they'll be looking at is, you know, we have an agreement with the Colton Joint Unified School District for the soccer field, but one of the responsibilities for us with the soccer, with the new soccer field or the soccer field enhancements is that we are responsible, because we have an agreement with the Colton Joint Unified School District, to then allow the Grand Terrace Soccer to use the field. Grand Terrace Soccer would like to have the field maintained at a higher level, so one of the things that we're going to be doing is going out to an RFP to have the field maintained at AYSO level. We'll get a vendor to come in and tell us what the annual, the semi-annual maintenance would be for that, and then we will then work with the soccer league to pay for that particular maintenance for the field. Also, as a part of the Lewis Project, our baseball, one of our baseball diamonds at the Veterans Freedom Park will be swapped with a new recreation facility at the, as part of the Lewis Project. So we're working on that and keeping the league informed of that, and we actually had a pretty good meeting last week with Lewis and the Park and Recreation Committee to look at draft potential plans for the sports complex. And then based on that modification, we will then hold a community meeting with the leagues, the soccer league, and also with a baseball league to talk about that future park. And we talked about things like parking, and fencing, and particular activities, and things that we could and could not do based on the constraints of the site. We also, one of the things that I've been approached by through, from basketball, from football and the basketball leagues, is that our current fireworks sales agreement calls for fireworks sales for leagues that have over 200 participants. The football and basketball leagues have now reached that criteria, but they have not had an opportunity to engage in the fireworks sales. So we'll have to have that discussion at future Park and Recreation Commission meetings to try and bring that, bringing that to fruition in terms of how they share that source of revenue for the future. In addition, we talked about the City Manager creating a legislative agenda along with, for the council, will investigate the use of regional lobbyists to promote legislation for automated street sweeping tickets. And we used to have that for a while, but that ended, and it's required us to go back and get some legislative support to bring that test program back, and then follow up with a regional meeting. We also wanted to update the platform to include funding for the Mount Vernon slope because of the potential hazards we identified in the mitigation plan, and also look at air quality improvements to promote clean air near playgrounds. And we have some of those that are located, and we believe that by working with our legislature, we know that there are a number of communities that have raised that issue regarding air quality, that where there's playgrounds and schools that are near freeways and major roadways. Also, the 2030 Vision Management, monthly reports, baseline levels of service, quarterly meetings, and one of the suggestions was that as we set up quarterly meetings with the council, the City Manager, to go over where we are with 2030 Vision Program, and it'll be a way for the City Manager to go in and meet with the council to talk about the overall strategies in the City Manager's Implementation Plan, and also whether we're meeting the marks for the 2030 Vision, or there needs to be some sort of adjustments or modifications to that program. In addition, we have the RFP for Legal Services. Our legal services, we've budgeted for this year is $135,000. We, I believe, have all of the rating sheets from the councils now, and we'll be coming back to the council to talk about interviewing the top five firms from the, who responded to the city's RFP for Legal Services. We also have the Community Benefits Fund. The Community Benefits Fund allows the city to partner with local community groups by granting small grants to support community activities. This is, it's budgeted by the council for $25,000, but over the course of the last two years, the council has committed $5,000 of that to the holiday tree lighting program, so really the funding for the community benefits grants is $20,000. There was also a request by a member of the council to look at defunding this particular category as a way to try to save money, so I just wanted to mention that as part of...
What action was that?
I'm sorry?
What action did we take to defund?
There's no action on that. It was just a, it was just a request.
Well, a request is inappropriate to discuss here.
Okay.
I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem. You're presenting the City Manager's Budget proposal to the City Council, which we appreciate. There'd be ample time for individual council members to comment on additions or deletions to the City Manager's Budget. Thank you.
And then under Special Events, there was, as I said, there's $5,000 for the holiday tree lighting program, and that's actually in the budget also. And then there's the 40th Anniversary Events. This program is actually $7,000 general fund. The remaining $32,300 is actually was either raised or, through fundraising, was raised as a part of the overall $39,000 budget for the program that's actually in the budget for this particular year. Now, our next is Public Works. Were there, I'm sorry, were there any questions in the City Manager?
Councilmember Hesse.
Mr. Duffy, Page 21, the Human Resource Paction 11,500. I brought this up last City Council meeting, so the ASM, is ASM's salary more than the Public Works' salary right now? Is it the second highest salary?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. So you want $11,500 because it's within the 5% parameter? Is that what you want to raise?
Yes, sir. What's happening is there's a compaction issue there, and what we try to do in the Human Resources field is to ensure that there is at least a 10% ratio or difference between the next person that you would actually supervise. And so there's a 5% margin that we're trying to achieve. It's 5% right now, about 4.73%, and we're just trying to get to the rest of the, the rest of the, the gap.
So is that written in policy?
No, it's not a written policy, but it is a compaction issue, and it's a best practice for Human Resources Services in terms of maintaining that compaction.
All right, because I like to remove the 11. All right, because I like to remove the 11,500 from our budget.
I'd like to know how the compaction issue happened.
Okay. And so, how the compaction issue happened was a result of the, the public, I'm sorry. When we did the, when we did the program for, when we added the Public Works Director, we had not funded the ACM position. And it had been, it had, it had been, we hadn't had a Public Works Director. So, one of the things we were trying to do was to add the Public Works Director. And prior to that, we had the Community Development Director doing the Public Works job, the, doing Park and Recreations and Planning Development Services. So, we were, so we were focused in on getting the Public Works Director position. And so, we, we knew that based upon the requirement for an engineering degree that we needed to have the Public Works position at a certain level. And so, we, we achieved that level by having the, the class and comp study was the 151. And we didn't look at the existing, the ACM position because it wasn't filled at the time.
Did, did we have an ACM at the time that we hired our Public Works Director?
We did not, but the position was there.
And so, the offer was made to fill that ACM position, creating a compaction issue that, that we wanted to resolve in one year at this point. We didn't, we didn't follow standard practice or best practices when we made the offer. And now, we're coming back and saying, oh, wow, we need to, we need to make that change all in one year. We couldn't spread it out over a number of years?
Well, you certainly, you certainly can do that, Mayor. One of the things that I was trying to address, when we, when we looked at this issue about compaction, classification studies and issues, one of the things that we were going to try to do was address the, the issue from a global perspective. But what, what happened and because we had this whole budget constraint issue, we only looked at just the compaction issue. And so, we certainly can look at it from a standpoint of trying to do it over a period of time or we can look at it, well, as I, as I proposed. If it's, if it's not the right time, then it's not the right time. But this is what I committed to bring forward to the council as, as a result of not only the compaction issue, but as the level of work that we're, that we're doing. If you, if you look at the various PowerPoints that we have, you'll see that the staffing levels are there for each particular group. And so, you're right, one of the options that you could do is actually you could, you could bring it back and look at it to try to ramp it up. Or you could look at it from a standpoint of trying to achieve the overall goal in, in one year.
Councilmember Henderson.
I support the city manager's recommendation to resolve the compaction issue. When I sat in the city manager's chair in 2014, we did a salary survey, classification study, compensation study. It's the first time in at least decades, if, if not the first time ever, that the city of Grand Terrace had conducted such studies. Our salary ranges were all over the place. And in some cases, in many cases, not competitive at all with, with the, with the marketplace. In other cases, over the marketplace. So, compaction is a real issue for any organization that proposes to comply with the studies previously conducted and to implement a human resources system with integrity. Typically, I shouldn't say typically, but oftentimes what occurs is when you have a compaction issue, the person works at a rate of compensation level less than what best practices require, less than what the market requires. In this particular instance, we have an ACM who is serving as a finance director, serving as the budget officer, and will be serving as a principal accountant if this budget is approved as recommended. We also have a person who's been with the city a number of years, both as a Willdan employee-
Mr. City Attorney.
Madam Mayor, what we're talking about tonight in the budget are positions, not the incumbents that are in the position.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Although, it's been my understanding, not my understanding. It's been my experience that it's difficult for council members and the community to divorce themselves from the position incumbents. I strongly support your, your statement, Mr. City Attorney. And so, if you look at best practices, if you look at the range between the finance director, excuse me, the ACM and the director of Public Works, it's clear that the, that the position cries out for corrective action. And given all that we know about what's being proposed in the current budget and what's occurred in the past and how this will actually correct one of the issues, one of the few remaining outstanding issues from the studies conducted in 2014, I believe that $11,500 is a small price to pay for that. Thank you.
It's actually the $8,000, right?
The, 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 the actual salary is more $8,000, a maximum $8,000, but the-
I'm assuming if this is done according to practice and the way it was done when I was your manager, you're talking about so much for salary and a commensurate amount or commensurate increase in the benefits associated with that salary, which would give you $11,500.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, I was just wanting to say that I also wondered how we got to a compaction. You've answered that. But I guess my, my preference would be to have had a mid-year adjustment, not to wait for, you know, the proposed budget. So, we're, we're, it just seemed the timing was off for me. But also, I'm concerned too, as Councilman Henderson speaks out, because basically what happened to the city of Grand Terrace and what happens to organizations is when you have fiscal, extreme fiscal distress, people start agreeing to work for, for less or out of class and then you get that, the disarray that we had. So, I think we, we, we need to, to commit ourselves to, to, to not strain from, from our studies and keeping the salaries organized the way they should be.
Councilmember Wilson.
I, I get concerned about us spending more money, as you know, for just, for what I consider a non-issue. I understand that compression seems to be a problem within the public sector, but bottom line is, all these people that are paying their salaries don't view compression as an issue at all. So, I, I think this is something that we can set aside for right now until we get a little bit further into our budget. I just don't, I don't agree with this at all.
I'd like to see it addressed over a couple of years with the goal to be to resolve the compaction issue, but not, not at one jump since it hasn't been a problem all year. It wasn't a problem when we made the offer. And, and now, when we're looking at our new budget, it, it seems to be a surprise. And I agree that we need to have that as the goal, but I, I think that we need to do it in a couple of steps instead of all at once.
Well, I'll make the motion to do as the mayor recommends. I agree with that. Let's make this a two-year resolution to the complications. I guess that's $4,000 each fiscal year for the two-year budget.
All right. So, since you made the motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Please vote. Motion passes with Council, sorry. Motion passes with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem, Robles voting yes, Mayor McNabb voting yes, Councilmember Wilson votes no.
Okay. Before we move off of this issue, I would like us to consider to, um, looking at the position of the human, or of the part-time code enforcement officer and, and finding a way to, to make do with our, our full-time existing and our full, part-time existing and to, to not fund that position at this time.
We, this, this would be an increasing staffing, right?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. But one of the things that, that I had said earlier is that what's happening here is we're basically putting up, adding a part-time position where we used to have an entire contract for animal control services. So, we currently, in this year's budget, we have 1.5 FTE to do code enforcement. And we have a contract for $154,000 to provide animal control services 24 hours a day. So, we're combining the two together and all we're asking for is the one part-time as additional resource. So, any action to eliminate this would basically keep today's level of service, but adding animal control on, on top of it.
Our contract with the city of San Bernardino was $154,000, as Mr. Duffy has referred to. He came back and asked for change in job descriptions and also had the net effect of reducing the $154,000 to roughly $110,000.
$117, yes.
There was a significant savings. And that savings is embodied in the, in the recommendation submitted by the city manager for the next two fiscal years. So, we asked the manager to change up the program, to become more effective, to become more efficient and to reduce costs. And he did that. And so, as a result of that, we're now going to take away one of the, or recommend to take away one of the benefits that we anticipated to be derived from this program. Grand Terrace needs more code enforcement and animal services, not less, in my opinion. Thank you.
Looks like they need some help with the dog perk.
Councilmember Hesse.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Henderson. You know, the, the thing is, this program, we've got to keep it moving forward. I think if we have any hiccups in it, we're going to step back. And we are saving the overall goal for us to save money. We are saving money. I would hate to have our code enforcement and animal services all of a sudden have a big hiccup in there, you know, where can't get called out or they've got to wait or somebody's got to hold a dog and then this person holds the dog and then next thing you know, the dog bites the child or something. So, I feel that the additional part-time is warranted for this to make sure that we maintain a proper and a good goal, a service for our community on the animal control.
I'd like to see us try it with adjusting the schedules as it is right now and then come back and look at it at the mid-year.
I think in order for there to be any action, there needs to be a motion in the second.
All right. I make a motion that we adjust the full-time animal control and part-time animal control offers, officers if we have to cut back to even five days a week, but adjust it so that there's coverage over the weekend and not fund an additional 35-hour code enforcement. All right. Nobody wants to join me with that. I'm going to go on to Community Benefits Fund. I think that's $20,000 that we need to spend in another way. Right now, it's, it's encouraging people to, we're actually have to actively going out and finding people to apply for the Community Benefits Fund. And I think at this time, if we're looking at ways to tighten our budget, this is the $20,000 that we can spend on something else. So, I make the motion that we, we cease the Community Benefit Fund at this time and spend it in other ways. And I would add to that the special events $5,000 as well.
Second.
All right. Please vote. Motion fails with Councilmembers Henderson, Hesse and Mayor Pro Tem, Robles voting no.
Okay. And I make a motion that we take the $7,000 out of the 40th Anniversary Events and spend that in a different way as well.
All right. No one wants to join me there. We'll move on to Public Works.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, distinguished council members. Alan French, Public Works Director, here to present the Public Works budget items. The Public Works Department is made up of seven employees. Public Works is responsible for the roads, city buildings and city parks. Two components of that is the responsibility for the maintenance of those roads, parks and buildings, as well as the capital improvement of those. Here are some of the main capital improvement and maintenance projects the department is working on for the next fiscal year. First, we have the Year Two Capital Improvement Program for the five-year plan to improve a number of streets throughout the city. We plan on doing slurry seal, overlay and full-depth reclamation to about 30 streets throughout the city. The project utilizes Measure I funds, some general fund for our maintenance of efforts and some SB1 money that was able to help us complete the full list of streets that we wanted to do. The next project is our tree trimming program. This will be year three. They were implementing this program. And we trim, remove and prune trees throughout the city. This item is funded by Measure I money. The next item is the Mount Vernon Safety Improvement Project. That's funded by a grant we received, the HSIP grant, which also included the design for those improvements. They basically improve eight intersections along the Mount Vernon Corridor, including striping and signage. The next project is the Commerce Way Extension. That one is funded through our CPNA portion of Measure I and our development impact fees. The CPNA funds about 60% and the DIF funds will cover our 30% match. The next project is an upgrade project for the Veterans Freedom Park. The plan for that is to include some upgrades to the bleachers, scoreboard, some additional ADA access and a slurry seal of the parking lot. And the, the league is partnering with us on that and as, as well as we would be using the development impact fees for that. Another project is the street sign replacement. We like to go back through the streets that we did in year one and inventory the signs and replace any that need to be replaced, that were damaged or faded. So, we plan on doing that this year. This next one is the Street Light Replacement Program. This next one is the Street Light Replacement Program. In September, we will be, we had partnered with Edison in a program that replaces the high-pressure sodium lights with new LED lights. This program, it replaces the lights, and then with the savings from the energy, it would pay for the light, and then the city will have some additional savings every year from our energy costs. Next item is the West Barton Bridge Project. City of Colton is taking the lead on this, and they are near awarding the design. They are just waiting for a state approval. That is, majority of that is paid for with federal grant. That'll cover the majority of the project. City of Colton and City of Grand Terrace are sharing in the matching amount. Next project, the Street Tree Replacement Program. We had done a program like this the past year, and it was really successful. As part of the tree program, we had to remove some diseased and dead trees in the road right away. This program was able to replenish some of those, so we're hoping to do that again Finally, there's a main corridor project that we were looking at to spruce up the city's main corridors of Mount Vernon and Barton, which would include the wall painting, upgrading some planting, and irrigation as well. This concludes the Public Works portion, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Director French? Councilmember Henderson.
Director French, excuse me. Director French, my question is regarding the new street sign program. Are we delayed in that project? I thought that there was a report earlier this year that it would happen during the spring. We have some street signs that are so faded, you can't even tell what street you're on if you're a visitor to our community.
Sure. Yes, sir. We had planned on it for the last fiscal year, but we had delays, delays in the program that we didn't get to implement it in time. So, we're hoping that this fiscal year, we'll be able to, we have some signs already that we can utilize, and we have the inventory now. So, I'm hoping this fiscal year, we'll be able to just move forward with that.
Do you have a list of intersections or streets where, where you proposed to replace the signs that you could make available to council?
We have, the inventory that we have were traffic control, street sweeping signs at this time. The street name signs, you know what, I'll have to look at that and get back to council on that. I'm pretty, I don't think we were doing street name signs.
Okay. Maybe I'm confused then, yeah. I was, I was referring to the street name signs.
Street name signs?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
But we may have included those. I need to go back to that inventory one more time.
What I'll do is I'll, the, the street signs that I come across that are, that are pretty worn, I'll just submit that information to Mr. Duffy and we can go from there.
Okay. We can definitely address that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Mayor, in terms of priority, whenever there is a safety-related sign, we will, we should take care of that right away. One of the other processes that we go through, as I've talked to Alan about, is that when we're doing a slurry seal project, one of the things that we want to do is we want to make sure that when we leave the street, that it's complete. So, if we're doing slurry seal and we're doing ADA ramps and everything else, we should also go through and replace any street signs that are worn and ragged, along with, with safety signs. So, that's one scenario. The other scenario, as I said earlier, is safety signs are a number-one priority that we need, that we need to work on. In addition to that, the council did give us some proceeds about a year, about a year ago for, and a resource to replace street sweeping signs, and also to look at adding additional signs where they were needed. So, that's one of, one of the priorities that Alan's been working with his staff on in terms of going through and looking at that. In addition to, for some strange reason, historically, the signs that we've selected seem to fade very quickly. And so, one of the things I'm, you know, we need to get a different type of sign because they just seem to wear extremely quickly. But most definitely, we can come back with a strategy and provide that to you, but absolutely, and we'll send, we'll send our guys out again. One of the things that we do on a regular basis, we send our, our maintenance guy out once, I believe, a month to go through and look at all of the light, streetlights in the evening, to make sure that if there's one that's out, that we, that we can report those. We can also send staff out too, to make sure that all the safety signs, that we have an idea of what safety signs need to be replaced as soon as possible.
Yep. We'll be doing that once a month. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would make a suggestion to Director French and Mr. Duffy, that on the street signs, those that are replaced, that may be coordinated with code enforcement for those, those homeowners who have trees and brush that are so tall it blocks the, the street sign, and you can't see it even if it's, even if it's in good condition. And you'll notice, at least where I live, on observation, there will be folks moving along at a good pace and slam on their brakes because they finally see the sign that they're looking for. And it's, it's becoming more and more of a problem. So, if we can clear away the trees and the brush at the same time, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, we can do that.
Mayor Protem, do you have a question? Okay. Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you.
Can we do it manually?
We need to reboot it like we did the last one. I broke it. I break things. Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Doug Wolfe, Lieutenant with the Sheriff's Department, oversee patrol operations for Grand Terrace here. My first project is continuing on with the ALPR project that we worked so hard on last year, again, funding the eight cameras that would be installed throughout the city at $155,000 by 2011 bond proceed funds. Again, that's the eight cameras that will be strategically placed throughout the city. The second one is continuing on with the 40-hour deputy, the full-time deputy, at $328,000 a year, and this is adding that 40-hour deputy. So, then we had two deputies during the busiest times of the shift, seven days a week. If that falls short, unable to locate the funds for that, I, next project is the 40 hours' worth of overtime to help fund the position as we did last year, because it is so important to have that deputy during those busiest, that extra deputy during those busy Next project is some funds set aside, $15,000 used to support our traffic issues throughout the city. Each year, we have trouble around our schools at specific times. We also have issues up in our mountains with off-road motorcycles, and these funds are good to have so we can combat those issues. Next one is 4th of July, $5,000, and that, this is to pay the overtime for the deputies that will be working, leading, the days leading up to 4th of July, who will be teamed up with county fire, as well as our code enforcement tackling the issues that the 4th of July brings us. Any questions? Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
So, Mayor, staff was also asked to just kind of go over the unfunded liability items that we talked about at the last meeting. So, we want to just quickly cover that, and then we'll, we'll move forward with the citizen
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. As the city manager had said, he just wanted to recap what we had in relation to unfunded liabilities or long-term liabilities. At our last meeting, we provided the city council with our major liabilities at this time. One of them was the CalPERS unfunded accrued liability, and the other is the loan that the general fund took against this accessory agency. So, what we wanted to do was touch a little more on the unfunded accrued liability. Also, if I can refer city council to their book on page 97, it might help provide additional information. However, just to summarize, the total, the city's total pension should be at 14.2 million as of the last actuarial in 2016 actuarial with a 2018 projection. Current market value of that 14.2 million is only 9.4. So, the difference is our unfunded accrued liability, meaning we should have 14.2 million today, should everybody in City Hall decide to retire. So, the unfunded accrued liability are for future obligations that we have. So, what CalPERS has done was amortize this over a 30-year period, of which that I showed, schedule is on page 97 of the book. So, every time CalPERS provides an actuarial, what they actually do is oft tell you, you're currently on a 30-year amortization, you're going to pay off your 4.8 million. Total interest you pay on top of that is 4.9. So, once we get to be 100% funded, we would have paid 9.7 million. Now, they offer, you can pay it in 20 years, or you can pay it in 15, and they show you what savings you will have in interest. And they do provide this to us every year. Of course, as you can see, the 15-year amortization is enticing. However, we, we would have to commit that we can meet all those annual required contributions. And as you can see, in the last few years, that's over 600,000. But that's not to say that this is not an amount that we can visit next year or in the next few years. So, the other one is the redevelopment loan, and this is just to summarize. The city borrowed a total of 4.6 million from the former RDA between '91, '92, and '98, '99. So, they were just actually doing transfers from the RDA to the general fund. At the close of RDA, that was a total of 4.6 million, and city council has paid approved payment back of 3.5. And the intent was then to make future payments. So, the remaining balance owed is 1.1, and the next payment due is in fiscal year '28, '29, at about 200, 220,000, of which after five years, that loan will be fully paid. That was the schedule that was, when city council approved that last big payment of 2 million, this is also the schedule that was agreed to. Yeah, that 2 million was supposed to be advanced payments. So, if we were to be paying this regularly, then next scheduled payment would be '28, '29.
And why was an advance payment made?
Why was it made?
What, what was the benefit of doing that, instead of just paying it on the schedule?
I think to relieve the general fund of having to account for that every year, should they need additional funds. And the reason they had that 2 million, that was RDA, when the former RDA dissolved, RDA had cash, and after review from the state, everyone was given their share, general fund received a share of that. That was almost 1.6 million.
And that, that really is one of the crux of why, of why they made the advance payment, was to get their share of the, of the 30%, or 20%
Yes.
Of that, of those proceeds.
Was that the so-called ransom payment? Yeah, I got to be refreshed on this. What was, what year did we do that? And was that part of the so-called ransom payment to, to continue on?
Well, this was done voluntarily by the city council at the time, so I'm...
I know, but what year? Refresh my memory.
That would have been 2013.
Okay. And we took the money out of, of RDA money that, in the settlement of RDA that we got?
Yes. We had gotten money that has settled. General fund also had its own reserve above and beyond the two months of operating. So, we paid it, and when we did pay that, we again got back 30%.
How is that calculation for 30% done?
The calculation?
Uh huh.
Okay. For the RPPTF, when they, when they distribute the taxes, so we receive taxes, let's assume we received 5 million, they have to pay all the taxing entities their share, then they have to pay our required obligation payment schedule. Any left over will only go to the taxing entities who did not receive 100% of their share, and that is only the city's general fund, the community college, and ERAF. So, when they reallocate just that remainder, once the original taxing entities and EROPs have been paid, our allocation now rises to 29.5%, almost 30%.
So, our, our normal allocation is that 20%.
Correct, sir.
But because when they, when they do the, the distribution through the RPPTF, there are some entities that are already made whole, and then we get a, we get a higher percentage.
Yeah, because this was a strategy recommended to us in 2013, so we would have some give in the general fund.
Any other questions? Councilmember Henderson.
Ms. Fortune, I think we've all read about CalPERS has a standard return on investment percentage of 7.5%, and it met that return on investment in a number of years until the Great Recession, and it struggled to, to meet the 7.5%. That's all, excuse me. My question is, if CalPERS return on investment exceeds the adopted level, whether it's 7.5 or any other percentage, does that have an impact on our accrued liability?
Yes, it does. They do an actuarial every two years, and they re-amortize that, so to speak. So, if our unfunded accrued liability is no longer 4.8 million, it's down to 2 million, they'll re-amortize that, so our annual required contribution will be reduced. And again, the city, if we had the funds, always has the option of paying it off so we don't accrue any interest through their amortization schedule.
I mention that because of, for the most part, generally strong stock market performance, and CalPERS and other pensions have done well in that similar environments in the past.
Yeah, but one of the things that you have to really be concerned about is their amortization and also the lag in between the times. For example, last year, they may have received 11, 12%. But they, their actual, I think it's based on a much long, a longer... But they, their actual, I think it's based on a much long, a longer average, average period. And so, you know, we all say, well, gosh, in, in 2016, you, you made a 14 percent return. And so what happened here? And so, so they're trying to stick to that, you know, seven, they've lowered it from 7.5 to 7 percent, which then impacts us. But you're absolutely right. One of the things that we look forward to is trying to get them to give us an update as, as soon as possible. For, for example, when we shut down childcare, we don't know how many people actually withdrew their retirement. And then that would affect our, our overall liability because we're, the liability says that this person has 20 years left in the system and you've got to make up that, that loss. But as soon as that person takes that money out, that eliminates our liability. So we're trying to get those, those update numbers as soon as possible and hopefully it'll, it'll, it'll show later on.
I think that's a good point, Mr. Duffy. I think the update numbers and maybe CalPERS sharing with us their smoothing strategy, as you talked about, it's over a period of time. But the smoothing strategy can help us in our budget planning and projections going forward.
Absolutely.
And, and just hope that they don't divest themselves of some of the energy investments. Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, may I ask just for a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Thank you.
Where's the, our council meeting? Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Mayor, and council members. We have the results of the, the survey from the, from the budget workshops in the park and at the senior center. Ms. Fortune will provide us with just a review of the, of the update of that chart.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Brotem, City Council. So our executive assistant tallied all the rankings that were provided by the citizens who attended all three presentations. What we used is what we refer to as a weighting system. So rank one was given the highest number of points, rank two lower, three, four, and so forth. Then we multiplied that weighing system by the number of responses we got and added them all. So if you look at city council, even if there was only two that ranked number one there, seven did, and through a weighting system, when you added it across, that came out as rank number one. So city council, the residents said that their most important one or their priority would be the established priorities for the city. They're second to be conducting public meetings. Represent the community's point of view as their third. Allocate resources and budget as their fourth. Provide policy direction as their fifth. And implement success, successful partnerships as their sixth. Do we have any questions on the way the ranking was completed? No? Okay. So then if we move on, I can explain, I can just read the top ranks. For the city manager, they ranked economic development as the number-one priority. For the city attorney, of course, provide legal services. For a city clerk is to maintain records of council meetings. For finance, it's budget allocation, monitoring, and financial reporting for all general and special funds. For planning and development services, their number-one rank was to process development applications. For code enforcement is to respond to code inquiries. For public works, the number-one priority is street capital improvements. For maintenance is for, to maintain and repair streets, sidewalks, and potholes. For the fire department, of course, it's timely response to emergencies. And for the sheriff's department, it is to maintain a presence to reduce criminal activity in the city.
And, and Mayor and Council, one of the things that's is important regarding this particular data is that, one, we actually had a, we had a really good turnout this year and we had some people that were attended several times. But we had a really good turnout and, you know, based on the rankings, they really got it in terms of economic development, how important that is to the city and how we move forward in the future. In that, as it played out in the city manager's ranking, also with the planning and development services, processing development applications. And then as, as always, you know, one of the bigger impacts that we have is the capital improvement programs. We, we talked about that. And so it was actually, they were really engaged in the, in the process. As I said, we had some people come multiple times and also ask different questions the second time they came. And we tried to spread the event out over, over the city. And, you know, even some people that were, that initially appeared to be critical, they were actually well-engaged in the, in the process. So where they might have said something that seemed to be critical on one hand, they talked about something that, that was positive on the other hand. So they were well, well-balanced and, and they were there to really be a part of the solution and not obstruct anything. So that was actually a really good exercise on, and especially in, in the parks. So Mayor and the council, with, with that, we have presented to you the city manager's proposed budget and the, we've noted the one change that you've made in terms of the modification to the compaction issue. And so when we present to the council the proposed budget, we will make that a correction, an adjustment in the potential fund balance increase.
Okay, do you need any, any further direction at this point?
No, I, I do not, Mayor.
Then with that, we're adjourned until our next regular meeting. Next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, June 26, 2018 at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. Thank you all for your time and thank you to staff for putting together this budget report. We're adjourned.